Pardoned. 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 Pardoned.[60.48]
...out as a community to Orange and Rockland, but we don't really get a response. We get told within ten, ten days to two weeks they're going to come. They can't promise a date or time. But it is, it's awful. I mean, there's mattresses, there's potentially people living up on the hill that's adjacent to our property. I think they're homeless. But we just want to highlight that it's definitely impacting our property values. You know, when people are coming to consider to live there, we've attempted, but coming here to ask for assistance if possible.
Now, by any chance, have any of you seen any animals like rats or mice or anything like that?
It's a great question. So, yes, we have vultures, like these really large birds. And it's a, I would say, a number of reasons it's happening. But, yes, we have a lot of wildlife, vultures, and it's so close to our garbage source as well that they're coming and eating it from there as well. But I've not seen a rat, but I definitely have seen other wildlife.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody has any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, we're just trying to keep our community.
We will get it to the right people.
Okay. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Remarks at Department Head. Maria Bruni, Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. Give you an update on the Community Development Agency. We closed on our house on Wisner last week, so we have a brand-new homeowner on the property that sat vacant for a few years. So, our program got another successful house back on the tax rolls and a new homeowner in our community. I'm looking for support tonight. The resolution, the County of Orange Municipal Tourism Grant that we received, we applied for this grant for the Rock Roll Run Weekend, so we received $4,999 towards advertising for the Run for Downtown and the Asia Concert at the Paramount Theater. So, that was the top amount that they were awarding, so we received that. Also, summer concert series begin June 1st and the Thursday night, and June 2nd, the Friday night, Farmer's Market, June 3rd. And now, I want to bring up Juan from Taco Factory. He's a member of our bid board and instrumental with the Cinco de Mayo Committee that we formed, Rick, Leonora, Jose from Alondros, Cheryl from the tattoo place up the street, Stephanie, myself, we all worked on the Cinco de Mayo, but Juan and Jose really spearheaded this. And Juan, why don't you come up and tell us what a great weekend we had?
Thank you, Maria. Good evening, board members. We try to organize this with Maria Bruni so that we can increase our foot traffic into the downtown area, so that we can have more business for all of our businesses downtown. More foot traffic equals more spending, and thus, a nicer community in terms of unity and what we have to offer. We saw an increase in sales during that weekend, and it was such a great pleasure to participate. I had to work the Cinco de Mayo, unfortunately, but it's unfortunate because I provide a good service to the community. And many of you, I know, thank you for inviting me, Maria. Like I mentioned, we hope we have this program every year to kick off the summer, and it will increase subsequently and hopefully exponentially throughout the years so that we can have more and more foot traffic. And this, with this in mind, I leave you and I thank you because I know this will be such a great opportunity for all of our other businesses and to entice other newer businesses into this great city of ours. You know, thank you so much. Maria?
Any questions? Maria, you want to?
Good. Thank you.
No questions? Fire Chief, Nick Barber?
Good evening. I just wanted to inform everybody that we received our burn simulator up at our training fire center. We hosted a weekend of training, train-to-trainers with the manufacturer of it. It was a great weekend, and everybody's looking forward to using it. We did add a second story to it, and we'll be getting in touch with Senator Scofis, Scofis, sorry. He would like to come up there and do a tour of it. So, when that happens, I'll let everybody know if they want to come up. And we're also, Fire Department's going to be participating June 3rd in Special Olympics over at Presidential School, and hopefully, it's going to be a good day, nice sunny day for everybody, and hope to see everybody out there. Other than that, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Tobin?
We talked briefly before, I know you couldn't make the last committee meeting, but the issue of like the false alarms, how many false alarms do we get on average?
For the year?
For the year, just in general.
I would say ninety percent of them are false alarms.
Where people are getting dressed, they're running down to, you know, to the truck, getting on the truck, go out to the fire, and it's a false alarm. So, it definitely is an issue, I think. And so, hopefully, we can come to the next committee meeting and we can kind of work on.
Absolutely. Give me the day, you know, I'll definitely be there at the next one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, I just thought, well, you're here, Chief. I would mention that the McCoys are going to be celebrating their 150th anniversary.
All year long.
Well, the official celebration is May 26th, so.
Yes.
Just wanted to let people know that that's the date they settled on. Some dispute on the date, but that's the one they settled on, so I just want to say congratulations to the McCoys. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Johnson?
Just one other point. I did touch base with Chief the morning after that meeting and suggested that he confer with the mayor and council. I informed him of the spirited conversation that we had about that particular code, so I would still encourage you, if you could confer with them before the committee meets again, so we can be more expedient in the matter.
Yes, I would like to meet with Alex prior to that, so I'll set up a meeting with Alex, maybe if you want to join in.
Okay, that'd be great.
Maybe just have it reworded. That would probably do justice.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Barber.
Thanks.
Treasurer Leonora Liz?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am here to speak on the, there's a resolution in front of you tonight in regards to re-establishing a parking authority. This is something that the City of Middletown has had in the past, it just expired. There are great benefits to establishing a parking authority. One of them is it can act as a standalone. In regards to financing, we are able to borrow fundings, and it does not impact the overall City of Middletown credit rating. So, this is, however, very preliminary. There's no plans, or there's plans to come, there's further conversations to have, however, we do have to take this first initial step, so I'm asking for your support in supporting Assemblywoman Gunther and Senator Scofis in their bill. Any questions?
Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, my understanding is that by establishing a parking authority, it's going to help us in our wanting to build a parking garage and work with the county in the new transportation center. Is that correct?
I don't know the exact plans for the parking authority, but yes, this would be an essential tool in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief of Police, you want you?
Good evening, council. Just a few items for you this evening. First, in regards to our residents from Spring Hollow, I'll have the neighborhood officers follow up in regards to the homeless, see if we can work with them to coordinate and maybe get some housing or some support services. I've spoke about this several other times throughout the last several months, and it's continuing to be an issue that we're addressing and trying to address, is car larcenies. They're throughout the city, there's not one specific pocket. However, this past weekend, we did have a pocket in Vincent Drive area where several cars were, items were stolen from them. It's mainly, for the most part, that they're unlocked cars, so I do ask once again that we encourage our residents to lock their vehicles, secure any type of valuables to try to minimize this. It seems to be a crime of opportunity. We have made a handful of arrests in regards to this, but it does continue to occur. I also have forwarded to council the statistics from Highland Avenue traffic in regards to summons and accidents, and then our most up-to-date speed trailer data, so at any point, I'm willing to discuss that with whomever. And then, this evening before you, I have a resolution in regards to the SRO contract for the 2023, 2024 school year, which you've heard me speak about this program in the past. I definitely support it, think it's a great program, and I'm hoping that you will support it as well this evening. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the chief? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, chief. As you know, we had the incident in the vehicle. There was no larceny because there's nothing in the cars to steal, and we locked the good cars, so, but I just don't want my windows broken, so I leave it unlocked. But we did have someone go through the cars. That was, I think, a week ago, Monday night. I did have also two more calls asking about when we were going to get an animal control officer, because there were issues, and they, people don't want to make dispute with their neighbors, and so they're leaving it at that, but they just, there are dogs running loose in other areas in the city, and it has been an issue, so I just thought I would bring that up. I don't know if we're making much progress on that. I hope we are.
So, ideally, we'll be looking to fill that position probably towards the late part of the summer, by the time we work through some of the candidates. The candidate that I'm looking at, I have to, it's a little bit of a complicated situation because he's employed somewhere else, and he is number one on the list, and he would be my preference in hiring. In the meantime, we're here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the police officers can handle all those animal control calls, which we do. We have a kennel, we have support services that we utilize, some of the local shelters to help us, so by all means, encourage whomever to call us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we'll be able to assist them.
Okay. And finally, the, I thank you for the Highland Avenue traffic report. I know a great percentage of the cars are at the speed limit or within a few miles an hour over, but I did notice one 94 miles an hour.
Yeah, so with that data, and there's normally always like something high, and I can't tell you exactly which vehicle that is. It could be an emergency response vehicle, it could be someone speeding. I couldn't answer that because it doesn't capture an image of it, it just gives us that raw data. But it does, they are alarming when you see those high numbers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk, do you have anything? And thank you very much for sitting in.
My pleasure, nothing this evening.
Okay. Public hearings and grievances?
Yes. Public hearing, proposed change to zoning code UR-3 district, City of Middletown, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, on or as near 7:30 PM as possible, Common Council Chambers, 2nd floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 123, zoning as adopted on March 27, 1967, and amended. B, and is hereby further amended by adding a new paragraph, 10, to subsection C, uses requiring issuance of both a special use permit and site plan approval by the planning board to read as follows. 10. Child daycare facility provided as such facility, A, is licensed by the State of New York, B, contains at least 3,000 square feet of usable floor space, C, provides an outside plate area of at least 600 square feet, and D, provides an off-street drop-off area for such children to avoid impacting street traffic in the area. The complete proposed zoning amendment is available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, Room 12, and on the city website. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning amendment. For any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing, email comments may be submitted in advance to rmacormick@middletown-ny.com, by the order of the Common Council.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Let me ask first, did we get any emails? Okay, no emails. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Excuse me, anyone from the council?
I believe this is in the first ward. You guys are fine with it, or?
Pardon?
I believe it's the first word, you guys are fine with it.
It is, it is the first word.
Yes.
There it is. All right, motion by Alderman Witt to close the public hearing, seconded by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Petitions and complaints, none. Remarks of Alderman? Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Just one thing, it is quarter to eight, and so that means if you have not voted on this year's school budget for the, actually, for the 23-24 school year, as well as the Board of Education candidate elections, you have 75 minutes to do so. There are three places to go, Presidential Park Elementary School, the Maple Hill Anics at Truman Moon, and if you voted at the high school last year, it's now at the Board of Education Office, which is located at 223 Wisner Avenue. So, you still have an opportunity. It's a 0% tax levy increase. I think the amount is $254 million and change, so that's your public service announcement. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Green.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria and Juan, for coming. I feel like you're a celebrity at my house. I think we order from you more than we cook, so I'm glad to hear that that was a very successful event. I understand the music was awesome, and just a little festival and nice atmosphere to start off the summer, like you said, so I hope we do continue to do that in coming years. I also want to thank Dave and Anna Madden, and Andy and everyone else there on the Run for Downtown Committee, and the downtown businesses who were there and kicking off the Run for Downtown season the other night. Was a beautiful evening to be out and have some good music, and kind of meet with some of the sponsors, and just a great night overall for the Run for Downtown. Since they're not here, I'm going to sign up the council president and the mayor for our team, so they'll be leading the race, I think, you know? Alderman Massey, I think you want to join? We'll do, we'll do it all, we'll be the first team across the line, but no, it's always a fantastic event downtown, and it was just a great way to kind of kick off this wonderful weather we've been having, so just hope everyone enjoys it, and we're looking forward to August 19th when the Run for Downtown happens. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Since our next council meeting is June 6, we had a lot of things going on before then, so I just want to quickly run down. I want to thank Maria and everyone, the Cinco de Mayo was very nice, it's a great downtown event, and I look to forward to it getting bigger. Fae Tien did a performance from their school at the Paramount, and then a reception at the Equilibrium afterwards, and that was very nice. The Run for Downtown, I just want to single out Marshall and Sterling, because Greg Townsend was once again there with a $5,000 check from Marshall and Sterling for the Run for Downtown, so that's very nice. And before our next meeting, we will have our citywide yard sale, so that's going to be June 3rd and June 4th, and once again, you can sign up for it and register on the website, or you can, then you'll be listed, and if not, you can just hold a yard sale, there's no permits or anything needed for that, for those two days on that weekend. And since the DPW Commissioner's not here, I want to remind people that Saturday, May 20th, is Electronics Drop-Off Day. So, all those TVs that should not have been put out for bulk pickup, or whatever you have in electronics, that's the day you go by the City Recycling Center on Monhegan Avenue and bring it to them, and it'll be dropped off properly. I mentioned to the chiefs, the McCoys, in their celebration of May 26, their 150th, and Memorial Day is the final thing I want to mention. I'm going to leave Middletown to Alderman Massey, but I just want to mention that the Town of Walk Hill is also doing their event, and they do it, are going to do it this year at 9:00 AM at Cross from Addie's Diner in the Veterans Memorial Park, so they'll have a Memorial Day ceremony there, and then Mr. Massey will tell you about Middletown's ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Ray?
Good evening. I really have much, I just want to tell the 3rd Ward residents that the 3rd Ward meeting is back next week. Since we've got no conflicts on schedules and locations and everything else, it will be at Maple Hill Park at the Pavilion, so we're hoping for great weather, which we've been having, so Tuesday, the 23rd, and yes, the cheesecake is back.
Alderman Johnson?
So, I've been chatting about trees last couple of meetings, and I'm going to pursue that endeavor. You know, the shade tree committee kind of fell by the wayside due to a variety of reasons that are not germane to this conversation. So, I started off thinking about this by talking to the Davies Group that did the original tree inventory about seven years ago, and of course, we no longer maintain the computer program for that, so we kind of, we're not able to maintain the inventory. But they mentioned that in the spring of '23, DEC and the government and the state might offer some grants for updates. And low and behold, on Arbor Day, my council historian forgot to mention that Arbor Day is the 4th Friday in the month of April in the State of New York, so that occurred. And the governor announced a possibility of $3 million in grants for that type of work. They divided those into two categories, above and below 65,000 residents, and there are two grant opportunities. One is for tree inventory and forest management, and that due date is June 21st, and the other is for tree planting and maintenance, and that is August 16th. And I've communicated with the Department of Economic Development to help me pursue looking for grants, and I think because we have a previous inventory, that we'd be pretty eligible to get some money for continuing that. And if you follow the email trail, Jacob Estard, those plantings in downtown with the help of the Cornell Cooperative Extension person. So, I will continue doing what I do until I get in trouble. Thank you very much.
Well, Alderman Johnson's funny. Today, I had lunch with former Alderman Large Moson, and that was one of the topics he was talking about, and he was hoping that we would get back into that game, so you have.
Trying.
You have support. Alderman Tobin?
I totally agree with the trees. I mean, there's so much of benefit to the community, and as some of our older, larger trees have fallen down or been cut down, they need to be replaced by younger trees. They stop the flooding, they slow down the rain, provide shade, so, you know, definitely it's, it's great for a city that has a lot of impermeable, you know, sidewalks and blacktop that we have those trees, just to deal with flooding. Plus, they make the city a lot more prettier. Cinco de Mayo, thank you, Juan and Maria, that it was beautiful to see different cultures in Middletown celebrated, you know, all the different fabrics that make up our community, so thank you. Spring Hollow residents, if you guys hang out after, I'll give you my card, and Jude and I will follow up with the Commissioner about the trash with O and W, or Orange and Rockland, and the vultures, though I think the vultures unfortunately are protected species, right, so we can't do anything with them.
We have had some issues with turkey vultures, as the police department is well aware, and when they were on Maryland Avenue, we found that green LED lights caused them to relocate out of the 3rd Ward and into the 4th Ward.
It's ring colors.
They got to go someplace.
I think the garbage cans have been shut more, that's done better, but I've been over there, and it's, I've seen, it was almost like a painting. I saw a vulture, I saw cats, I saw chipmunks, and they're all surrounded that garbage can. It was, they're all living together, I mean, but we'll see what we can do for you. It was, you know, it's strange.
All right, and the one thing I had Alderman Kleiner mention, the Memorial Day, the American Legion Post 151, they're having theirs at 10:00 AM at Thrall Park, and then they're inviting people back to the Lodge on Way Beyond Avenue for refreshments. No unfinished business, new business.
Yeah. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a $5,000 budget transfer for a commercial washer for the Fire Department.
All right, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Oh, sorry. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Sorry. Got it. Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Harris. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing an agreement with an enlarged, with the enlarged city school district of Middletown for the School Resource Officer Program for the 2023-2024 school year.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Harris. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, accepting a $4,999 municipal tourism grant for the County of Orange.
All right, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Roll. Sorry. Carrie. A resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ray, authorizing a proposal from CDM Smith for a reservoir water quality study.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Harris. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, approving a proposal from CT Mail for an engineer assessment of six dams.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Harris. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, requesting the New York State Legislature to establish the Middletown Parking Authority.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Harris. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing the hiring of Lori Banks as a temporary part-time cashier in the Finance Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderwoman Ray. Comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?